I'd love to call the order to order the workshop for the Board of County Commissioners. If we could rise and if you could join me in the pledge allegiance, please.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Turn it over to Roger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This afternoon, we'd like to talk with you about the transportation capital improvement project priorities for the coming year. There have been a few changes that we'd like to talk with you about, so why don't we just get right into it? Dave?
Thank you, Roger. Good afternoon, Commissioners. It's good to see all of you. Dave Loveland, Community Development. Before we get started, I wanted to thank the administration. Together, so we have something coherent to present to you today. And with me today is Randy Cerchi, the DOT Director, to help answer any questions about the particulars of the projects and that sort of thing. We haven't updated the priority list since 2019. Last year, we just worked from the same list. As part of the discussion today, we're going to talk about the transportation revenues that feed into the Transportation CIP, the project criteria and ranking methodology, that we have, the consideration of priority revisions that we're going to suggest today, and a proposed project ranking, and then the next steps from there. There's two key questions we're hoping to get some direction from coming out of the discussion today. First, do you agree with the recommendations based on the direction from your November 17th workshop with Randy in talking about the Colonial Alternatives Analysis? And so some of the recommended changes that are proposed today come directly from that discussion. And also, do you agree with the recommendation to reprioritize the Three Oaks project based on cost versus benefit and a reduced necessity due to other improvements since that project was originally conceived? Looking at the transportation revenues that DOT works with when they build the CIP, the primary sources are road impact fees, which do have some limitations. They can only be used to add capacity, and they have a geographic limitation, so they're collected by districts and they have to be spent within the boundaries of those districts. And the base amount for the road impact fees, we are on a five-year cycle to update that every five years. 2023 will be our next update of the base amount for that. Local op and gas taxes are a key revenue source. It is, we do assess the maximum allowed by state law. It has to be authorized under state law, 15 cents total. And it's used mostly for capital expenses for transportation purposes, but some goes into operations as well. The growth increment funding, which the Board created a few years back, which is an attempt to capture the first year property tax revenue from new development, it's a flexible source. It can be spent on any kind of projects, but it's been used mostly for transportation over these last five years and looking ahead into the five-year CIP. Surplus tolls is a revenue option. It's the excess toll revenue beyond what's needed to cover operational costs and debt service for the three toll bridges that we have in the county. They are subject to some fund sharing agreements we have both with the City of Cape Coral and the City of Sanibel. Proportionate share is an assessment option. It's a transportation assessment. It had been historically applied to large developments known as developments of regional impact under state law. Or you can set it up in special districts like we did along Corkscrew Road, and it can often be more than impact fees. Typically, those revenues tend to be earmarked for specific improvements. They're assessed to deal with traffic in a particular area. And then we do take advantage of grant funding opportunities when those arise through state and federal sources. And we have quite a bit of that built into the CIP right now based on grant awards for particular projects. So the Board in 2015 approved the creation of this project ranking system to help formally establish a list of priorities to feed into the annual update of the Transportation CIP. And the reason that's necessary for transportation projects is because these projects involve multiple steps. You have a design and permitting phase, you have a right-of-way acquisition phase, you have a construction phase, a construction engineering inspection phase that goes with the construction phase, often a landscaping phase. And each step can take multiple years and cost millions of dollars. So you have to kind of plan ahead in terms of addressing need and working all those phases into the five-year spending plan. And there's competition for the limited dollars. So the prioritization system helps make it easy in terms of determining, here's the things we need to focus on first as we go through that. So we did come up with a system of ranking criteria. We've created a scoring system that goes with each of these categories, looking at system preservation and maintenance of assets that we already have, looking at forecasts and existing level service deficiencies, system continuity, where you have situations where four lanes goes to two lanes, that sort of thing. Safety is a big concern, a big priority. We look at where there's opportunities for multimodal benefits, and funds coming from other sources can be part of the ranking criteria, and return on investment. One thing I want to stress, you can create lots of different kinds of scoring systems and whatever criteria you want to utilize. This is just a tool to kind of get us to a relative order of projects. Ultimately, the decision is the Board's as to what order you want to see the projects So prior to the creation of the priority list, the original four main priorities we were dealing with, and kind of what led to the creation of the priority list, we had these projects and we were struggling to figure out how are we going to fund all of these things with the revenue sources? And the Board was insistent, all of the projects are priorities. And the philosophy was kind of Board, the Board sets the priorities, determines what the projects are, and then it's on staff to go back and figure out how to pay for all of those, how to arrange the dollars to make that work. The four big projects we started off with in 2013 are listed here. Two of them are actually completed. The Aliko Road four-laning, we just had the ribbon cutting for last month, from Ben Hill Griffin Parkway Airport Hall Road, and the Homestead Road four-lane in Lehigh Acres was completed last year. And the two others, Burnstall Road and Estero Boulevard, were broken into phases, and so the last phases are now under construction for those two projects. One of the things this does highlight, these were determined to be top priorities in 2013. We're just now getting to the point of wrapping up these projects. So that highlights kind of the long-term issue you're dealing with in trying to make these projects happen. So when the Board approved the ranking system and we created the priority list, there were 25, there are 25 projects that were ranked. With the scoring system, it kind of lent itself in splitting them into tiers. So we created a tier one, tier two, tier three, with the idea that tier one was the highest priority projects, and that's what we should be focusing on with the five-year CIP. As we work our way down the list, then the other things start moving up. So this is the list of tier one projects. There's 11 projects on here, and the asterisk on the numbers highlights that since this was created, first put in place in 2016, eight of these 11 projects are now funded all the way through the construction phase in the CIP. One note, the Lehigh Acres paving program is actually set up as a 20-year program, $5 million a year. So it's funded through the first eight years, but there's still more to go for that. And it's important to note, the Corkscrew Road project does assume some borrowing in order to fully fund that in the CIP. So what we're going to talk about today is some revisions. There's a couple of projects that we are suggesting can be removed from the list because they've actually been completed. And then there's going to be five projects that are all related to the Cape Coral Bridge, Cape Coral Fort Myers Bridge crossings and the approach roads as additions, and then a couple of adjustments for some projects that are on the list in terms of where they end up in the relative order. The two projects that we can drop is the, first, the Colonial Boulevard Alternatives Analysis. The study has been completed. You talked about the results of that back in November. So we're actually proposing some projects to be added to the list that came out of that And then the Matt LaChee Park Road Bridge Replacement was actually down in tier three, but that was advanced and done sooner in conjunction with the fishing pier improvements that are being done at the Matt LaChee Park. Those are almost completed, I believe. The bridge work is actually done. So for the suggested additions, five projects, four of them we're proposing to add to tier one because of the importance that was highlighted as part of your discussions in November. From the Alternatives Analysis Study, there was a kind of a two-phase recommendation approach. First was to look at some short-term improvements that we're calling the Colonial Safety and Intersection Improvements between US 41 and McGregor. So that was smaller scale and more immediate improvements that could be done within the corridor to improve operations. Next, we had the Cape Coral Bridge westbound span replacement, which was already a CIP project, but had never been put on our priority list. We kind of assumed, because it was going to be fully toll-funded, it didn't need to be included, but ultimately, it's, all the projects that are eligible for toll funding often have a mix of revenues, so they should all be included on the priority list. And we're expanding the scope of that project based on the discussion from November to include six-laning of that bridge. The Colonial Summerlin flyover, a left-turn flyover from Summerlin to Colonial, in conjunction with the six-laning of the midpoint bridge is the next project that came directly from the recommendations of the study. And then we have the Veterans Parkway six-laning, one of the remaining four-lane pieces from Chiquita to Skyline, proposed as an addition. That's actually highlighted in our annual concurrency management report as a roadway that's failing today. It's not meeting its adopted level of service standards. And then for tier three, we have another project on the corridor, the Veterans Santa Barbara Overpass, which had been discussed in the past and is a key component. The intersection was designed, assuming an overpass was going to be there eventually. So we have some suggested adjustments to projects on the list. Within tier one, you had the Hickory Boulevard Bridge Replacements. There's three bridges along that corridor, and we're proposing, based on a reevaluation of the need and the year of needed replacement, that that dropped from the number nine priority to the bottom of tier one, which would be number 14 with the additional projects added. Design is in the CIP but not construction. And it is important, I think, in considering this corridor, we do need to think about spacing out the improvements because the Estero Boulevard reconstruction is really kind of part of that same corridor, and then the Big Carlos Pass Bridge, which is going to start construction next year, is within there too. So we need to look at kind of spacing out these construction projects. The Burnstall Road four-lane project, which is the part going north from our current project up to Charlotte County line, from Van Buren Parkway to the Charlotte County line, we're suggesting drops from the bottom of tier one to the top of tier two, which is consistent with the scoring for that improvement. The level service demand for that segment isn't as high as it had been on the southern segment that we're working on now. And we're suggesting moving a Crystal Drive three-lane project. This is between US 41 and Metro Parkway to the bottom of tier three from tier two, based on its revised scoring. It actually scored the lowest of all the projects on the list. And then we have another suggested adjustment related to the Three Oaks Parkway project. This is going north from just north of Aliko Road to Daniels Parkway, and includes a component to eight-lane part of Daniels Parkway from the Fiddlesticks Boulevard intersection to I-75. This was already a CIP project when the priority list was created, but it was only partially funded at the time. It had actually been discussed and conceived years earlier. And so it's been number one on the Board's priority list since you first approved the first list in 2016. The thing is, it's some of the need for that corridor has changed over time. When the project first started, the whole focus was trying to add more north-south road capacity, particularly in the south part of the county. But a lot of that capacity has now been added since this project originally was considered. This US 41 six-laning has been completed by FDOT. That was a number of different projects to complete that. The I-75 six-laning has been done now by FDOT. They've added the Michael G. Ritt Parkway, which is a brand-new six-lane roadway running parallel to this. And so, and then we have the Ben Hill Griffin Parkway corridor on the other side of the interstate as well. So there's a lot of additional north-south capacity, and the need really is kind of more east-west capacity now that we're facing in the county. We're dealing with the constrictions on Colonial Boulevard, on Daniels Parkway. It's why the Aliko extension is such a critical need. There's also the issue of the costs. Since this was first considered, it's actually gone up tremendously in costs. In 2005, we were looking at about $32 million to do that project. The latest adopted CIP, the cost estimate's $104.7 million. A lot of that cost is right-of-way cost, and when this project initially started, the proposal was to tie into Fiddlesticks Boulevard. The communities along there objected to that and pushed for the road to be shifted over between Old Hickory and the interstate, and there was promises that right-of-way would be donated. That has not materialized. And so we're going through the process now, trying to secure right-of-way, and we are running into some difficulties there.
I have a question. Dave, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So the right-of-way, so when it started back in 2000, it started back in 2005, some of that water was acquired back between 2005 and 2009, correct? Some of that right-of-way was already acquired back then and back in 2007, '08, '09, correct?
Yes, there has been some right-of-way already acquired along the corridor.
What's left to be acquired now on phase one and phase two?
Is Robert.
I mean, you've got the Freeman property, and we got the other property north of the Freeman property.
Yeah, I believe it's adjacent to the Freeman parcel and then continuing north, adjacent to the interstate, and then through the France property as it swings back toward Fiddlesticks.
Right. I just wanted to point, because some of my colleagues weren't here back then, I wasn't here then either, but I know the acquisition of those properties required back in '07, '08, '09. The southern portion of that was, because the county's original plan was come straight up Fiddlesticks Boulevard and off of Aliko that was purchased there. Is that part of that cost, has already been developed there where those businesses are being built now? The Aliko extension off Aliko there, Three Oaks off Aliko now, that first mile?
The, those costs aren't included in these numbers, the cost of that, that Freeman building.
These are new numbers that are still left to be purchased, okay?
Yeah.
Where are we at with some of those landowners as far as purchasing those properties and stuff?
I can't answer that question. I think, Robert.
Randy?
Randy?
We've designed and been purchasing properties hopefully from the south to the north. So getting through the Freeman property immediately over the canal, and then we have the Fitzgerald properties, then the France properties, and then there's a tank of properties up towards the Daniels end that we're working on but haven't gotten any yet. Then there's even more on the north side of Daniels where the CVS is and on the other corner there. So there's still lots of properties to acquire.
Do you have a map showing what's been acquired already?
Yes.
What's still on contract?
We do. I don't think it's part of this presentation, but we do have a pretty accurate map. Be happy to share that with you.
Well, Robert, get up. Robert, did you, who has that map? Was that part of the presentation?
No, sir. We don't have that in this presentation, but...
Okay. Just curious where they're at with that.
Be happy to share that with you.
So the recommendation in regards to the priority list is that we retain the Daniels eight-lane portion, the east-west component of that project, as the top priority with an estimated cost of about $18 million, which would also allow the completion of the design phase for the Three Oaks component, and that we reprioritize the Three Oaks extension portion into tier two at the number 16 project, based on the revised need that we've identified here, and that the available funding can be shifted to higher priorities as we go through the CIP update process. So what would that look like for tier one? We don't really have a change to the top projects through number nine, other than the Hickory Boulevard projects moving down to the bottom of the tier. And then we have the four projects proposed to be added that I referenced that are all related to the bridge crossings and the approaches at 10, 11, 12, and 13. Yes, sir.
On your spreadsheet, number 10, Colonial, the years one through five, do we consider year 21 as year one?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make certain it was clear.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I have a question. So we have had the Three Oaks Parkway North extension as number one since 2016, and it is fully funded and ready for construction this year in 2021. That's what it was slated for?
It was going to be constructed in phases, part of it in '21 at the south end, and then continuing north in '23. It was funded, but it's not actually ready for construction because we don't have the right-of-way.
Okay. But it was funded for construction this year, and you're saying we're not there because we haven't gotten the right-of-way for it. My question is, so what do we get built this year? Because we were hoping to get something started and broken ground on this year. What are we going to get this year if we make this change that you all are suggesting?
Well, the funding would remain for the Daniels Parkway component of that, and that's something I think DOT would be in a position to move forward fairly quickly on. Also, the project Roger just mentioned, the Colonial Boulevard Safety and Intersection Improvements, the reason he asked if 21 was year one, that's current year. Because that's a lower cost at $860,000, and there's available funding, that's something that could be funded current year and started fairly quickly.
It just, I mean, it's surprising that, you know, it's been number one since 2016, and we've been obviously putting the money away for it every year, and now it's fully programmed and was ready to begin construction in 2021 and then move through, in phases through 2023. And so we finally get here to the year that it's time to build it, and now we want to reshuffle the deck. It's, I don't know that that's the best way to do things. It's not very, you know, I mean, our CIP is supposed to be something that you can make predictions based off of and kind of have a reasonable expectation of what's going to be built. So I was surprised to see that, and I guess my question is, I'd like to know, if we're going to make a big change like this, are we going to then have to not, you know, push construction on whatever's going to replace it out a couple of years? I mean, are we, that's what I wanted to know. What will we get built this year? Will anything be able to be built soon enough to take its place?
Yes, sir. I would note, the first phase of Corkscrew Road is also scheduled to start this year, right?
But that was also in the other plan too, right?
That's been in tier one for a couple of years now, and the DOT has advanced that.
Yeah. But it's not like you're moving Three Oaks so that you can build something else this year. You're moving Three Oaks so that we can move other stuff into the tier that may be built in later years.
But not all of Three Oaks, not all the money dedicated to Three Oaks is current year money.
Yeah.
A lot of it is future year money.
Okay.
Randy, did you have something to contribute?
We were ready. I mean, the object of the project was to build the canal or build the bridge over the Fiddlesticks Canal.
Yeah.
Then what we called phase one was from the Fiddlesticks Canal up through roughly Dr. France property. Phase two from there up to Daniels and including the I-1000 Daniels. We had the bridge contract ready to turn in before the New Year's, actually, to get started, right on target how we're supposed to. But with the trouble we were having getting the property immediately north of there, the Freeman property, and then also the France property, both decided to go to condemnation. Had they got a condemnation and we started building the bridge, there would have been no leverage. They could have asked for a limitless amount because, you know, we kind of crossed the point of no return there. So the idea is to keep designing the project, and you'll have a chance to reprioritize it every year. Next year, if you, if we get the project back to 100% design, work through these property issues, if you want to reprioritize it, you can do so at that point.
I just know that, you know, I mean, we need roads built, and I think some of the arguments you've made about the need changes are very compelling arguments, and certainly I understand that there probably are better roads we could build right now that could relieve more congestion than the Three Oaks Parkway extension does. But I'm concerned with the idea that we've been working towards this date of getting under construction now for five years on a road, and now we're going to say, you know what, actually, we could do a different road, and then we get pushed out a few more years before we ever get any new road. I mean, at least if we went with the plan that we have, we would get started on a road this year that may not be the most pressing road, but at least it would accomplish something, whereas the alternative looked like we're going to just plan for a few more years and not have anything new. Does that make sense? I know I'm kind of talking in...
Roger?
Dave? Commissioner?
I just want to say, kind of, I don't want Commissioner Hammond to say, you know, I've had workshops and neighborhood meetings with the community out there for the last three years, and the last year, we've been pretty much saying the roads are going to start next year, phase one, and phase two, phase three, and then up to Daniels with improvements of Daniels and also King's Crossing across the way. So that's why I was surprised to see it pushed back to tier two. I understand we got to go through negotiations for the property. I understand we got to do what's best for the budget of the project and everything, but not building the bridge is to kind of, or say we can't change it over the year, which I know we can change it if something happened tomorrow with this acquisition of property, I'm sure we could change the projects. This is, I'm not sure if that's the best way to negotiate. We're going to stop the bridge. We're not going to build it now because we're not getting the property now. Because I thought we had a lot of those properties acquired already. That's why I was asking for a map earlier to see how many is really left besides those two large parcels.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I understand your frustration, but please keep in mind how this process works and the fact that this was always slated to be a two-phase project. The project to the north was largely dependent on the donation of right-of-way, and that's how the project was conceptualized. When those property owners had a change of heart and suggested that we were going to have to go through the eminent domain process, that shifts the burden to the county to show necessity for that roadway at the time of the taking of the property through eminent domain. That triggered an internal discussion and analysis involving our office as well as administration, engineering, excuse me, and planning, as to whether if push came to shove, we would be able to demonstrate that necessity at this time. And it was determined, and fully concur in our office, that given the other road projects that were outlined on that slide, if pushed to demonstrate necessity before a judge at this time for that northern section to take those properties, it would be an uphill battle at best, meaning that the traffic concerns that triggered the discussion and the placement of Three Oaks north as a number one property or priority have since been alleviated by the finalization of those various other construction projects. So our concern was if we ended up in an order of taking hearing, not being able to demonstrate necessity, we would be liable for plaintiff or defendant's attorney's fees, expert witness fees, and not be able to take the property. So what we're suggesting by reprioritizing is, we're not asking the Board to remove the project from the list whatsoever, but in recognition of the completion of the other projects, we reevaluated necessity, and that necessity is what places it at the suggested level.
So being the new person here, really the exercise that you...
I have.
You got it.
Being the new person here, the exercise we have is, I mean, I heard everyone loud and clear, and in my briefing, it was very clear we ran into some challenges that were not anticipated. Having said that, we have a situation here where we have a project that has a significant amount of money being allocated to it, and really what we need to do is, what portion of that can we do, and then what portion can we reprioritize? I mean, we need to deal with some of the challenges tomorrow because since there was a lot of consideration, a lot of right-of-ways that were going to be donated, and that didn't take place, it's just, I understand from my briefing, but I don't mean to simplify, but isn't it, we have to reprioritize because the cards we dealt, we can't play?
Well stated. In a briefer... Well stated, in a briefer fashion.
So, I mean, I think, you know, and I understand all the frustration, but I think, you know, we unfortunately got deuces when we thought we had aces.
You know, I guess the question I'd like to pose to the group is, though, you know, we were supposed to get under construction on some project this year that, while it may not have been the best project to relieve congestion, it was a north-south project that we were going to get started on this year. What are we going to start on in its place? And if we're not going to start on anything in its place, how quickly can we get started on something else in its place? Because, you know, I think for the folks who are driving on the roads, they have a real hard time understanding why we can't build roads faster than we do. And look, you all have great explanations for why. I mean, we understand the funding. We get to see it at a level they don't get to see it at. But, you know, that's my question. I've got, you know, folks who, you know, when we get back to pre-pandemic levels, are going to be sitting in traffic again, wishing we'd build more roads. I had something that we were going to get started this year. Now it looks like we may go back into planning for more years.
So Commissioner, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. Commissioner, I want to make sure I understand your concern. So if we're not, if we're going to move the Three Oaks project farther down the list, the dollars that would have been allocated this year, what else, what do we plan to spend that money on?
Yeah.
Okay, Dave, Randy?
Can we go one step further? I mean, I know the Three Oaks project has construction from 21 to 23. Could we just break that down so we understand, to get to Commissioner Hammond's point? It's not the whole 104 that we're going to spend in 21, correct? So maybe we could just identify what dollars we're going to spend, and I understand it's 22 and 23, but maybe to get to Commissioner Hammond's point, is if it's $30 million or any like kind of things that we might be able to accelerate, having $30 million that we've allocated in our budget. Is that fair?
Yeah.
We open the Corkscrew project at 20 minutes from now. So Phase One of that started immediately. The core project, the core permit on the second phase is still going to, those things just take down. It frustrates me as well as you how long these things take, but I've learned to deal with gray hair. We can get that thing moving faster. At least we can have it all paid for. We'll have both sections of Corkscrew paid for, with the monies left over that we don't use immediately on Three Oaks. Then we could then reprioritize through, again, at your leisure in subsequent years.
And we're still doing design.
And we're still doing design on Three Oaks, that's correct. We're not going to stop on the design or the property acquisition. We'll struggle through, trying to get the property working towards subsolution. When we do have that, and we'll let everybody know, hey, we're ready to go, then we'll bring that to the next prioritization meeting, and you can reprioritize accordingly.
Commissioner?
Just a couple of comments. You know, the planning cycle that was developed here is pretty amazing, but it's the plan. And in those plans, there's a lot of supposition, you know, what's actually going to take, and you're going to run into problems one way or another. So you can't anticipate everything. When we run into delays, for whatever those delays may be, you know, it doesn't stop the need that he's accelerating. So you can't say, well, we're going to park this over here until we can resolve these issues. The demand is there every day. We have to keep moving that along. And I think that's what's happening. The development of some of the new roads are basically going to where the need is, and that's caused this to fall maybe a little bit in priority, at least a segment of it. So I think that this has to be something that we, whatever situation, we run into a delay, we got to keep moving forward, which I think goes to your point. And I can tell you, you know, Corkscrew to me is the biggest issue that I seem to deal with every day, I think all of us deal with. And I think when you look at, and that's an east-west situation, when you look at Alaco, and what that road is meaning to us now, from the communities that are there to the business development, Alaco is, speaks for itself. And I think Corkscrew is in that same thing, and that's east and west again. So from a priority perspective, the change that we made, north and south, they're important, they need to happen. East and west, I think, is critical for us.
I guess, Randy, the follow-up is, if we had 104, almost 105, allocated to Three Oaks, and you now have Corkscrew at just under 50, what dollar amount was going to be spent, and, or is there going to be another 55 left over? I'm just trying to understand the math. As we reprioritize, to Commissioner Hammond's point, it seems like we still have $55 million of projects that we would potentially have dollars or we allocated for if we didn't run into issues in Three Oaks. So if we move that up, we still have a significant pot of money left over. Is it your recommendation to continue to try to get the right of ways and maybe move that up, or use something else for the 55? Just trying to understand what other piece. If it doesn't look on the list, is anything ready for 21 to 23, other than Corkscrew? Is that a first statement?
Mr. Chair, Pete?
Commissioners, one thing this would do is, you could, for the second segment of Corkscrew. You could use, for the second segment of Corkscrew, 13 million of debt. That would free up, you could fund that completely, fully fund it. Also.
Without incurring debt.
Without incurring debt. Then also, some of the.
Just trying to simplify money, so I put, just dollars for dollars. We had a dollar, we're going to spend 50 cents, we've got 50 cents left over. Just really to simplify it.
What would free up, after you've paid for the eight laning from Appaloosa to 75, it'd be 71 million. Now, not all of that, some of those are gas taxes that we were going to, that we were going to collect concurrently in the following two years on this project. So those could be freed up, as well as we have some that is already sunk, that would be freed up. Another thing, another goal could be on Alaco Road Extension, a goal of funding as much of that as possible, without getting into debt.
We'll quick, Pete, on the, you're talking about Phase Two of Corkscrew, then you talk about Alaco. Do those numbers reflect the future prop share that's coming in and impact fees for the future development out there, or is this currently what we have now projected? Because if there's more money coming from, you know, proportion share, $1,800, $1,600 per unit, then you have impact fees too. Does that number reflect that or not?
The 13, what is reflected is the 4.8 million in prop share that we're going to get from Verdana that we know for certain. No, it doesn't factor in if, you know, what development may kick in over the next couple of years. But the 13 million is after that 4.8 million.
I'm just saying, it's, I don't know if Commissioner Sandelli's been there lately or not, but like, the place, I think they're like, almost sold out, those places, or it's unbelievable. If you take a chance right there, but you'll see, while blue, all these communities, they're selling their inventory faster, they can build it. So I know some of them are actually trying to back off a little bit, are they raising prices? Just trying to adjust the market, but it's booming. So I know there's money coming in from impact fees, and even the future developments that's coming that we haven't seen yet will probably be contributing to those numbers too. If you ever have a chance, Commissioner Hammond and Mann drive out there one day, you'll be surprised. One of those model centers one Sunday, it looked like a Costco. It was crazy.
There's definitely, obviously, a need on Corkscrew Road. The point I was trying to make earlier was, regardless of which way we prioritize the projects, whether we're looking at Slide Nine, which is the original, or Slide 14, which is the proposed, we were going to get Corkscrew Road constructed between fiscal year 21 and 23 anyways. Now, one way has us borrowing money, and I guess I'm understanding that the other way we would pay for it in cash. Okay. I mean, again, I, you know, I was, so I was, so we were theoretically looking at Slide Nine's schedule. We were going to have, by the end of 2023, we were going to have Three Oaks constructed and Corkscrew constructed. Now, looking at the new one, we're just going to get through Corkscrew construction, and we'll have part of Daniels widened, but that's all we're going to get by the end of 2023. And that, to me, is not as much progress as I wanted to make. I want to, I mean, we've got a congestion issue.
Mr. Chair? Commissioners, when I think about the, sort of, the, what we're discussing now, that the Corkscrew Road project is a little over $49 million, and we intended on financing that. If we move the Three Oaks project farther down the list, we take that cash, we free up bonding capacity. So if you have another priority for an east-west or a north-south, you know, we can always, we can always borrow money for that. You know, so my question to Randy and Dave is, do we have another project of, in the Tier One, that's ready to go, that we could apply more money to and accelerate? Is that?
Great question.
Okay.
You know, I guess I'm trying to simplify this as much as I can. So when you look at, and again, the chart maybe not necessarily is clear, you look at Three Oaks at 105 million, I guess I don't know, A, what was spent, 21, 22, and 23, what is debt, what is cash? And then, if I understood that, then we can potentially, as Roger alluded to, pay for what we were going to do in cash, and then what we potentially are going to borrow, is there another project that we think we could accelerate to continue to move our plan? Because the issue we have is just that we need to try to accelerate all these projects you all have determined to be important. All these projects need to move, and how quickly can we reshuffle the deck and deal with it? I mean, I just think it really comes down to dollars and cents, it's cash, it's bonding. Here's what it is, what's our priorities? Because I agree with you, Commissioner Hammond, we need to move the projects as quickly as we can, and they're all important. So we can't stay idle when we have this money that we've accumulated to do something. So we just need to look at it really, and what projects could be ripe enough to do it, and then look at dollars, and then look at debt, and then make the decision, to simplify that is.
I was kind of, Jeff, I could, real quick, on your note of that, is, we've been talking about this last couple of years, about how fast we need these projects. We're seeing the numbers of the airport, we're covering faster than anything else in the world, in the country, with airport numbers, traffic's coming back, and it's going to come back, I think, next year, even worse than it was the year before. I don't think it's a funding issue. It's not like we're just trying to negotiate some deals here with some property owners. I think we need to put more effort to negotiate those deals and move it on, because I don't think it's a funding issue, current or future funding, because the funding is going to be there, I believe, for the future growth. So I just would hopefully, we can just hopefully, you know, just encourage both sides to come to the table and negotiate those deals so we can get that back on Tier One again, as far as Three Oaks, because that's what I would support. Would this come back before us to vote on this final CIP?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So if I'm hearing Commissioner Penegras, and I'll go to the county attorney, how many obstacles do we have with Three Oaks as far as acquiring right of ways? Two, three, four, five?
Mr. Chairman, as in all government citizen acquisitions, it's either voluntary or involuntary.
Right.
Voluntary is where, the path that we thought we were on, with the two significant property owners and the project to the north. Involuntary involves the use of eminent domain condemnation. The board as a government has less of a free hand in terms of where you choose to locate roadways in the eminent domain process. To satisfy the constitutional requirements for lawful taking, we have to show that the acquisition of a private citizen's property is necessary to further the public interest. In our discussions at the staff level, when we analyze the impact of the other projects that are listed on, forgive me, Slide, let's, Slide 13, our ability to show necessity to satisfy a court as to our burden in an eminent domain case was troubling. So we understand the board's frustration with regard to the northern segment of Three Oaks. But again, keep in mind that you're talking about a different burden in involuntary acquisition, which we thought we had, versus a condemnation slash eminent domain, which would require the demonstration of necessity. Given these other road projects, we don't think we could demonstrate necessity at this time. It might very well be next year's analysis, or the following year's analysis, that changes that necessity determination.
So to summarize, we're in an impasse, an impasse that legally would be a real big burden for the county to overcome.
Yes.
Even if we thought, you know what, county attorney, go do what you need to do, just for a moment, just go with the hypothetical. What's a timeline, if we would go through a process, to actually try to do a taking on the eminent domain? And, not saying we would be successful, just understanding the timeline. We're talking about two years, five years, three years? Ballpark.
Fortunately, Florida has a two-step eminent domain process. It's called a quick take. Under that process, and that assumes the courts are open because of COVID-19, which is a big assumption right now, because they're not. They're open on a limited basis, largely dealing with the criminal docket to assure constitutional protections. But assuming we can get a hearing, that would be two to three months out. It would be incumbent upon us to deposit in the court registry what we think is fair compensation. The court would then, assuming the other side does not request a necessity determination hearing, the court would order a transfer of the property. Our indications in this case is that would not take place. So then we would be in a circumstance of trying to schedule a necessity hearing. That, in this case, would probably be a one-to-two week trial. To get a one-to-two week trial, we're, in a civil side, we're probably talking 10 months to a year at best, at that point. Assuming at that point we satisfy necessity, and the property owners do not appeal, then probably two to three years after that, we'd end up on a trial for damages.
So quickest assessment, 15 months to 18 months. Slowest assessment, multiple years.
Three to five years.
Okay, multiple years. So, I mean, I think we're in a box, and in your legal opinion, based on what we have in front of us, it's not worth our time, our dollars, or our effort to try to explore this, so it's still going to be legally, in a legal battle, that could take as long as five years?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
You hit on something a moment ago, and I think that's timing here, and I said it before, timing here is critical, because the need is continuing to increase. And so delaying, potentially delaying out, you know, for whatever period of time, is the delay, and what that does to the infrastructure. The second part is, it's not going to cost us any less to do it, you know, three and five years out. So it's time and money, you know, while we have a need that's continuing to increase.
I think that really, when you boil it down, we're at $155 million for the project in the next three years, that we're going to really move, and is there any way to come up with substitutes for that dollar amount as quickly as we possibly could, where we would, maybe not our first choice, but certainly our second, third, and fourth, which if we could put together, it might actually end up freeing up many areas as opposed to one particular area.
I will say, I'll say this, and maybe this would give you guys some ideas on how to move forward, but if you could satisfy me that we've gone back and tried everything possible to work with these property owners that we would need to acquire the right of way from, and that they've all said no, and negotiations have failed, and we have to go the eminent domain route. If we're stuck in the eminent domain route, then I understand the case of the necessity and would be willing to look at the proposals you all are putting out there.
Mr. Chairman? I can represent to the board that with regard to one property owner in particular, he has recently changed legal counsel. The legal counsel that he's changed to is a defendant's eminent domain specialty counsel. Our communications have sunk to a lower level, to the point where it's basically, we're not going to have additional cooperative discussions. File your petition in eminent domain. I can make that representation to the board sitting here today.
So in your legal opinion, we should move on?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm comfortable with that.
I agree. From the substitute perspective, as we look to fill that gap, if we put one piece or delay a piece, how fast can we accelerate Corkscrew?
I'm sorry, what was the question, please, sir?
How much faster can we accelerate Corkscrew?
Again, first one, as one possible. First segment opens here in 15, 10 minutes or so, so we'll have a contract for the first segment. The second segment, we're still trying to get the core permit, Armored Corps of Engineers, it's a lengthy process. Money can't accelerate that, but hounding them may. I mean, we may be able to push that up to a year, so we'd be a year into the first phase, we can even start the second phase, wouldn't matter there. Ortiz, between Colonial Mar- Ortiz between Colonial Martin Luther King is ready to go. It's, it's pretty close, and then we could fund the entire second phase of Corkscrew. So it's, it's not like the money's going to sit and not go anywhere.
Randy, if I could clarify, so, okay, so Corkscrew says fiscal year 21, 23. So this is 21 now, so they're not, when we actually, they're still waiting on Armory Corps to approve some permits out there?
For the second phase.
How about the Phase 1?
Phase 1, the bid opens again in, in 10 minutes, opens at 2:30 today.
How long we have before the bids close?
Say again.
When do the bids close?
We'll open the bids here at 2:30. We'll, we'll get a, we'll see the low apparent bid. We'll, we'll check that with our engineering record, make sure you haven't left anything out. And we'll send it to procurement, we'll set a board date, hopefully we'll be going by April, I would think, March, April.
So March, April, they actually start turning dirt?
Yes.
March, April, start turning dirt and paving?
Phase 1.
Working west...
It'll be a while before they pave.
Working west to east?
I don't know the contractors, he hasn't, I haven't seen his scheme yet.
Okay.
Given the issue that's in front of us, is it unreasonable to put together a dollar amount cash bonding in a timeline, 21, 22, 23? Here's a project we're going to do called Aliko, uh, called Corkscrew, and, and here's what we're going to do in 21, 21, and 22 and 23. Match dollars up, and then maybe the bottom one, what's left over? So we have an appreciation for what dollar amount and what projects we could accelerate. You know, because there's only few that are going to be ready in the design phase to actually start to build, right? I mean, we don't have many that are in that process.
I got a little lost there.
So what I'm trying to understand in a real simple is we had $155 million worth of projects.
Right.
Really, what we're doing is, I mean, as far as Corkscrew, we're moving forward with, with Corkscrew regardless. So how do we resubstitute the 105 million for Three Oaks? I mean, that's really the issue, right?
Yeah, actually, I just, I just even did the math real quick. On Slide 9, the spent budgeted number at the bottom of Slide 9 is 424.54 million. The spent budgeted number at the bottom of Slide 14 is 350.86. So the difference is 73.68 million. Yeah, so we call it 74 million for sake of round numbers. So, right, what could we do with that 74 million in the next five years to get something built?
Simplified. All I was trying to do.
Can I just add one element to that, please?
Sure.
We're going to, we have to assume that that 74, 75 million dollars will allow us to, um, to move something up in the schedule and build it faster, right?
Mm-hmm.
Randy? Well, more, if we have, if we have more cash, can we accelerate any of the, any of these projects?
Well, I'd have to take a look at that, but my, unfortunately, my, my gut instinct is not, if, if, if I had a project ready to go, we'd be building it. Honestly, I mean, it's the permitting and, and...
My point earlier was, is there actually a project ripe enough for us to do? It's not cash, we got tons of cash.
Yeah, we got...
We're, we're just not at that, we're not past the, we're not in the construction phase. And we need to be in a construction phase to actually, actually construct. We need to try somehow get past the design to get into the construction phase, and we're not there. And the problem with this list is there's really not a second alternative to fill the $75 million void. That's our problem.
Randy, did you?
Yeah, I believe that we could accelerate Ortiz. We could get that going a little faster, but that's like 22 million or something, it's not, it's not as much that there is left over.
Commissioner, we, um...
But, 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 I mean, in all due respect, Ortiz was in 22 anyway, so we're looking at 21, 22, and 23. So I'm just looking at if we're taking $105 million off, Ortiz was going to be done in 22, brother, is no? I mean, the way this was designed, right? Ortiz is number four? $22 million in 22?
That's right.
Yes.
So moving up, Tez up doesn't help us deplete the 75 million that Commissioner Hammond talked about.
Correct.
I understand, cash isn't the issue. We don't have a project that's ready for construction, other than what's on this. There's no other project, you know, if you look at 21, 22, those are the projects ready to construct.
So, uh, Mr. Chair? Commissioners, I, I don't, I don't think we're prepared to answer that question very, you know, finitely today. If the question is simply, what, are there any projects up there that we can, we can stick a shovel in the ground sooner than, than, than currently anticipated? Because you're right, money's not the issue here.
Correct.
Yeah, but it doesn't matter whether we got 70 million in cash that we're not going to spend or wherever. I mean, we, you know, we have, we have a lot of bonding capacity, so cash is not the issue. The question is whether or not we can accelerate any of the projects that are on the list, right?
Yeah, that's kind of what my question was initially. I'd like to understand what projects do we have that are available? What the dollar amount we have? What we're going to actually borrow? Because maybe the solution is we don't have a project. The good news maybe is that we didn't borrow any money right now. That might be the, you know, but at least we'll get a list from you, give you an opportunity to say, okay, we need to reshuffle, and we have another 75 million. Is there anything that we'd substitute?
So, Commissioners, with your permission, then, you know, we, let us talk about that, see, see if we can answer that question in a way that's going to be satisfactory. You know, we talk about accelerating these projects every time we have these conversations. So let us, let's go back, take a look at it and see if there's, um, see if there's a way to accelerate any of the projects that aren't currently scheduled to start this year or next year. Is that kind of the question needs to be answered?
Really, in the next three years, is there anything we could substitute?
Gotcha. All right.
I think that's what we all want, right?
All right. You get that? So we want to have a conversation about the, the schedule that's posted there, but are there any projects over the next two, three years that we can accelerate, you know, faster? So we don't have to answer that today. We'll get together and talk about it and see if there's a way to accelerate any of them.
Again, the Ortiz section from Colonial to Martin Luther King, that's just about ready. That's where the Hanson roundabout came in from the city. From Martin Luther King to Luckett, and then Luckett to 75, and then that piece from Luckett up to State Route 80, that's nearly 90% design. That could actually be accelerated too. So that whole piece of Ortiz and Luckett to 75 is, is in the category that you're discussing.
That's number 17, if you wanted to see it on your chart, it's in...
Commissioners, I think part of the answer is going to be based on which of these projects are easiest to permit.
I, I think it's, it's what could get us on the table, 21, 22, 23. And then secondarily, to make sure there, you know, there's still significant tiered projects that's going to significantly impact and reduce traffic.
You know, not to jump, uh, a slide ahead, but on Slide 15, you'll see that in Tier 2, Burnstour Road, the four-laning from Van Buren to Charlotte County line is 79.3 million dollars. I mean, we're, we're close, as Frank likes to say, close enough for government work.
And, and, and I think this exercise really is just to allow staff the opportunity to reshuffle a deck and let us look at this.
Sure.
I mean, it's really that simple.
Sure. Yeah, we're, yeah, we're happy to do that. And then we'll, gives a little while to go through that analysis, and then we'll, we can get back with you either during a workshop or at the end of a board meeting or, you know, wherever's the most timely way to have that conversation.
I think there's a lot of good discussions in these workshops, so if I had my preference, I'd rather do workshop.
Sure.
We could, even if it's short, it could get to the point. Good dialogue.
We have, um, you know, we traditionally have workshops every other Tuesday. We have a limited number of those as we work towards the budget season, so it might be an off week if that's...
Absolutely. I think we're all here to help.
Okay.
And, and you got a lot in your plate these days, Roger, so we'll work with you.
Thanks. We appreciate that.
No problem. Thank you.
Randy, you, you get it?
Yes, again, one thing that we're going to end up reporting on when we come back and have the discussion again are the woes of permitting. How, how much we are not in control of that.